All right.
Okay. This is the regular meeting of the Mobile City Council, Tuesday, March 9th. Please stand for our invocation led by Pastor Philip Johnny Emmanuel, Seventh Day Adventist Church, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the honorable members of this council, I thank you for the honor and privilege of praying today. Shall we pray? Father in heaven, it is an honor and a pleasure to have you as our special guest in this meeting. Your word states that righteousness exalted a nation. It is you who have placed these men and women on this city council to raise this community to a higher standard, to do what is right so others could prosper. When it comes to time, when it comes time to make decisions, may they seek you. May they not, may they not allow the opinions of men or pressure from political parties push them into making the wrong decisions. But may they, they, may they understand that you are the only true guide. When anyone is tempted to abuse his or authority, remind them that it is you who have allowed them to be in this position and can sit them down as quickly as you place them in this position. I pray your blessings and guidance for every council member. May the action that they take uplift the community. And when, when the day of reckoning arrives, may they all hear the words, "Well done, the good and faithful servant." Please give them the wisdom like you gave to Solomon, because you have the solutions to all problems. Please surround them with your holy angels and fill them with your holy presence. May, may they be an example to the rest of the nation as to what changes for good can take place when we make you our guide. We thank you for honoring our request. In Jesus' name, amen. And everyone of you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Richardson?
Yeah, I want to ask Pastor Johnny, where is he from?
I'm originally from Saint Lucia in the Caribbean.
All right, okay.
Yes, sir.
Good to have you today.
Thank you, thank you for having me.
Roll call, President Manzi.
Yeah.
Vice President Small.
Here.
Councilmember Richardson.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Dave.
Here.
Councilmember Rich.
Here.
Councilmember Gregory.
Here.
Statement of rules.
Again, good morning. In response to national, state, and local guidance due to the COVID-19 pandemic and in accordance with the Alabama Open Meetings Act and the Governor's Supplemental Emergency Proclamation, we are meeting remotely while we are all in different places. We are able to participate as if we were in government plaza in the council chambers. And in keeping with the requirements of the Alabama Open Meetings Act, the public is still able to observe the meeting through the live stream. All items we will address during this meeting are either necessary to respond to COVID-19 or necessary to perform essential minimum functions of the city. The public is able to present comments to the city clerk that will be disseminated to council members by emailing cityclerk@citymobile.org. Those comments will be acknowledged, distributed to council members, and included in the meeting minutes. As always, the meeting is live streamed and can be viewed through the city's website or on the council's Facebook page. Any persons wishing to offer commentary during any particular part of this meeting will be allowed three minutes to speak. At the end of two minutes, a bell will sound indicating that there's 60 seconds to wrap up any and all presentations. At the end of that 60 seconds, we'd ask kindly that all commentary would cease. Those are the rules for this particular meeting, and we thank each and every one of you for your continued interest in your municipal government.
Approval of minutes of March 2nd.
So move.
Second. Probably moved in second, any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Communications from the mayor.
You're on mute, Mr. Mayor, good morning.
About now, good morning.
There we go.
This morning.
It's here.
You're back muted.
Again, about now.
There we go.
Now, okay, sorry about that. So in keeping with National Women's Heritage History Month, on Thursday, March 11th, the Gulf Crest Maritime Museum will be hosting the latest event in its Gulf Chat series. This month, it's Gulf Chat: Making Waves, Women in the Maritime Industry. And it's going to be led by Dr. Brandy Keel Reese, who's an Associate Professor of Marine Science at the University of South Alabama and a Senior Marine Scientist with the Dolphin Island Sea Lab. Now, it's not history yet, but it will be history and the making because of the number of women that we have added to the Fire Rescue Department in the City of Mobile. But as we continue to seek greater diversity among that department, and we're currently looking for more women in our community who are interested in protecting our citizens, this month, we're hosting two Ladies Night events with the women of Mobile Fire Rescue. These events will be held on March 9th and March 15th and are open to all women 18 years of age or older who want to challenge themselves to complete the Firefighter's Fitness Challenge alongside the women of Mobile Fire Rescue. Those interested in participating can call 554-2298. That's 554-2298. I'm sure there are a lot of the ladies who participate in CrossFit who are certainly physically fit enough to participate in this. So please call and sign up. Also, I'd like to focus on Rosemary Jen, who's an Assistant City Engineer. She's one of eight people from my area who received a watershed award in the latest issue of the Mobile Bay Monthly Magazine for her work in keeping local waterways healthy. She spends a lot of her time focused on litter and how we can keep it from getting in our waterways, but also keep it from running out into Mobile Bay. She oversees our federal grants that have enabled us to place devices in the water inlets and capture litter. Another item is that last week, and this is a COVID-related item, I want to thank Councilwoman Gregory for helping coordinate the vaccination event that was held at the, excuse me, Friendship Baptist Church, Friendship Missionary Baptist Church in District 7. She and Dr. Corey Brown, along with Director Barber and with our partners at USA Health, you know, made sure this happened. It was a very successful event. And as we said last week, you know, we will be going into all the city council districts and the areas where those that live in there may not otherwise feel comfortable coming to the civic center to get vaccinations or going somewhere else. Anyway, we will continue each week, you know, to reach out into the community to do onsite vaccinations at various churches. And let's see. Also, coming up on this weekend regarding Art Walk this Friday night, you know, we continue to try to change the programming a little bit, tweak it and improve it. And in conjunction with the Parks and Recreation Department this Friday, they're hosting a skate night around Beenville Square. So Fred, get your roller skates out and we'll see if we can't skate around Beenville Park. If not, maybe we can scoot around it. Anyway, also coming downtown Mobile for the first time this weekend, the Providence Hospital is going to hold a festival, Festival of Flowers in Cathedral Square. And y'all know that's a huge, huge event for the Providence Hospital. It's always been held out there on their campus, and as I said, this is the first time for it to come downtown. So we'll make sure that we really fully support that. Is this a magnificent, always a magnificent event. Also happening this weekend is the Gulf Coast Challenge on Saturday, Atlanta People's Stadium at 4:00. And we are also welcoming the teams for the Savannah State University, University of West Alabama. And last but not least, you know, you know that we have a item on the agenda to contribute. A lot of conversation about the contribution made to Bishop State. I would agree with some of the comments that were made. We certainly will have an opportunity to readdress that, you know, in the future because it's in everyone's best interest that, that, that modernization renovations that they are doing that'd be tremendously successful, and we will do our part to make sure that happens. Last but not least, also on the agenda is a donation to the Navy League for the Christening of the USS Mobile. We hope to have, hope to make that maybe the best christening of all the LCSs, having preliminary conversations with some of the mighty girl organizations about having a mighty girl parade on May, on Friday, May 21st as a lead in to the ceremonies for the christening of the USS Mobile. So I hope all the city council members will mark their calendars for that Saturday, also for Friday night, but really for Saturday for that christening event. So, Mr. President, that's all that I have at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Gregory?
Thank you, and, and thank you, Mayor, for you and your staff and everybody who was involved in setting up the vaccination event over at Friendship Missionary Baptist Church. We had a great turnout. I was able to speak with a lot of people out there who were excited that they were able to come and get their vaccination just around the corner from where they lived. One woman who we worked with for a long time during the annexation, and her name is actually on the park out there, Miss Hattie McCants, did not want to go downtown. She didn't feel comfortable, didn't want to get out and go that far. So her son, her son-in-law and her daughter talked her into going over to Friendship in order to get her vaccination there, and she said she was good with that. So I had a great conversation with Miss Hattie. But I did want to say that helping people understand what we are doing and why we are doing this and not publicizing these events to the entire city. I had one gentleman email me wanting to know why I didn't promote it district-wide. And so I had to explain to him what the reasoning was. Didn't hear anything back, but I think as we go forward, we need to make sure that everybody understands that we are doing these within these communities, as the mayor said, for people who may not feel comfortable going to the civic center or to the cruise terminal or possibly don't have transportation, but somebody would be willing to take them around the corner. These are in underserved neighborhoods that we need to be able to reach out to and bring the vaccinations to them. And I think it is working very well, and I know that the mayor and all my other colleagues look forward to having these vaccination events come to their districts as well.
Absolutely, absolutely, Ms. Gregory, you're absolutely correct. Any other commentary and questions for Mayor Stimson?
Yes, I would like to ask Mayor Stimson, do you know what, what, what the age limit is for persons taking that vaccine?
I defer to Chief Barber to see if he has an answer to that question because I'm not sure I know the exact answer.
Okay, I, I, someone asked me, and so I need, I need to get the answer.
Councilman Richardson?
Yes.
This is Anitra Henderson. So there's not an age restriction at this moment? We are in 1B, which includes people who are 65 and older, but also educators, manufacturers in that category. So it's not a specific age limit, but we have all of that listed on our website. So you can refer them to the City of Mobile website.
Okay, so you're saying that if an 18-year-old showed up, they, they can get the vaccine?
If they are in the, the category of 1C.
16 to 64.
16, 16 to 64.
Oh, no, hey, no, I got you. Okay, let's get it up.
I have a question of the mayor, if I may.
Ms. Rich?
Thank you very much. Mayor Stimson, in, in listening to the commentary about the outreach vaccination locations, District 6 does not have a technical, social, economic area that's part of HUD or, or with DBGE. And so I still think there's something with seniors being able to navigate long distance to get it. So how are you going to handle 6? Has there been any thought about that?
Yes, it has. We've actually discussed, you know, should we use the Connie Hudson Center to do that? And really, it's like us vetting all the locations, you know, we come up with an idea. Somebody presents an idea and we start discussing the pros and cons of it. And so that's the thought at this point in time is maybe how we would handle 6.
Okay, and, but it would not be the criteria that it be in a socioeconomic area because obviously 6 would not get that outreach, but I think there would be a lot of seniors that would like to take advantage perhaps.
Right, we, we, we agree with you on that.
Okay, well, great. And also, I, I don't know if you were at the conference, but we have an agenda item. We'll be laying it over. I'm not opposed to the item, but it's an improvement with CIP on a park in District 7. And I just wanted to know how the administration decides to move projects forward when they're park-related. And so, because I've been looking at a particular improvement to restrooms and concession stands at Medal of Honor, and actually, it goes back a number of years. And it's supposed to be coming forward in the next couple of weeks, I'm hoping. But again, I didn't know what your administration does in regards to how they decide which projects will move forward. And the funding for the one in District 7 is 2021. So I'm just curious to know what, what the protocol is.
And so.
And you don't have to tell me now unless you know that off the top of your head.
Well, I know somewhat off the top of my head, but what we'll do is, Colonel DeLapp, we'll get together the, kind of the procedure that we use, and we'll respond to you by next week.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
President Manzi?
Mr. President.
Mayor CJ Philmon.
Yeah, to, in response to some of Ms. Rich's questions, we will be calling a committee meeting very soon by the request of the president for the CIP. I will get with my committee members and see what they available, and we would call that committee meeting very, you know, soon. So those answers can be given to us in the committee, in our committee. And also, like I say to the mayor, I think that's great news to have a mighty girl parade around the 21st of May for, you know, this big event for the City of Mobile. My question is to you, Mr. Mayor, you know, I believe that you said that every mighty girl organization has been invited to participate in, in parade. And I'm asking you, are you planning on participating in the parade? And also, I'm charging this council also to make sure that we are represented also in the parade also because we are the leaders of the city. There will be a great thing that's going on the next day. And for the Mobeans who pretty much kind of miss mighty girl this year, and it can be a little warm outside besides cold outside, I think May 21st, as long as the rains stay away, would be a great evening for the City of Mobile. I'm not too sure what all planes you have, Mr. Mayor, but I really believe that this should be very, a big event. I mean, from food trucks, I mean, from Dolphin Street party. Because again, it's very subtle when we have a real warmth, you know, during mighty girl season. So us celebrating in May would be great that we can go out there with our shorts as long as the, what's the blind termites call? I can, swamers are not present at that particular time because I do know that's swammer season and everything. So, yeah, if you are participating, Mr. Mayor, I charge this council that we also participate also and lead off this great parade.
Thank you for your comments, Council, Councilor. You know, at this point in time, and it was actually earlier this morning that I've sent to Joe Snowden, who will be coordinating this effort with the mighty girl organizations to do this. It was only probably, probably 10 days or so ago that we were, we confirmed the date of the christening. So we have a lot of work to do. I know that we can't, and I don't think every mighty girl organization wants to put all of their floats in a parade. So it may be that, you know, an organization can put two or three floats in it because at some point it gets, the parade gets so long that we don't have a route long enough, you know, to accommodate, but so many floats. Anyway, we're working on it. The only conflict that I may have is that because of some of the Navy events that night, and there's usually a dinner the night before the christening, you know, I'm not sure what the, what the Navy's expectation of the mayor is or my being there, but I can assure you to the point that I can be at the parade or be in the parade, I'm going to make sure that we have a, well, I'm going to participate in making sure that we have a great event.
Let's schedule around.
I hear you.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Mr. Williams?
First of all, I just wanted to respond to Mr. Small's comments. And I, I don't want to think too much about the city council wearing shorts, but I do hope they participate. Hey, since last week, the, in having our financial report, such a great report, there has been so many comments that have come to my office, I guess maybe trying to get me to take credit for that. And I'd just like to put credit where it's due, and that is to, to Mayor Stimson and his administration for putting us in this great financial position. It is, it is not every day that you can brag on your municipality, especially in this day and time, for, for being fiscally responsible. And of course, you know, the city council gets credit sometimes unduly, but I'd like to make sure that that goes to the 10th floor. And I thank Mayor Stimson for always doing to put us in the position we're in. Thank you.
Councilman, I appreciate you saying that, but that is really a shared responsibility. Councillors have a huge part in that, as well as do all of our leadership team, all the way down to our line workers. And so, you know, we're just very fortunate that everybody's working together to do that. And obviously, Paul West said a lot of that in motion as the Finance Director. And so we're tremendously grateful for what he did to tee it up. So I think that we can all claim some of that credit. So thank you for your comments, but let's share in that. Let me make one other point, going back to what Councilman Small said about the parade. You know, the COVID numbers are excellent right now. And of course, with the governor's recent order, you know, that we will no longer be in, be wearing masks after the 9th of April. You know, I, I feel comfortable at this point in time, based on what we know, that, Councilman, that we, you know, we can have a, a big event and, and it be a safe event. So we just keep our eyes on the ball regarding COVID, just to make sure that we execute and make sure we don't end up with creating something that we don't anticipate.
One question with that, Mr. Mayor. I understand that the, the president administration is saying that by the end of May, that, you know, the adults that want to be vaccinated at that particular time, that want to be vaccinated should be vaccinated by the end of May. Are we on track in Mobile by having, you know, at least 70% of the residents be vaccinated by May 1st? I mean, do you, do you know that off the top of your head or not? I understand if you don't.
I, I, I don't think that you will be at 70% vaccinated at that time, Councilman. I know that based on the number of vaccines that we're currently administering, I think that we could be approaching 50%, but if you add in the number of people that have actually had the disease that may be immune, you know, it probably would be over 50%, but I can't project that it would be, be, be 70. Make, you know, that's by, maybe by, I tell you what, let me change, let me change that a little bit. By, by the end of May, you could be closer to 60-plus percent. So you may approach 70. Now, I was trying to do the math in my head. So you may be, you may be close to that number.
All right, thank you.
Mr. President?
Mr. Richardson?
Yes, I would just like to briefly talk to the mayor regarding Barrish Lane. The resurfacing contractors showed up in District 1 in November, and they did a number of streets in Trinity Gardens. And, and then they pull up. But I noted, once, once I allocated funding for resurfacing, I notified the citizens that, that, that these are the streets that will be resurfaced. And then, once they came to District 1, I assumed that they were going to do District 1. But yet, they, they pull up, and the people in Barrish Lane, I'm taking a big hit with Barrish Lane. So when I raised the issue, wrote you and Nick Amberger and, and Lap and all of them, I got a notice from Nick Amberger stating that because, this was on the 19th of last month, that the contractor would be back at Barrish Lane the next day, which would have been the 20th. He said the cement contracts would be back only 20th. My, but my letter was regarding resurfacing Barrish Lane. So I assumed then that when the cement contractors, this was, took about two days to finish that up. And he said, if, if, if the rain didn't stop everybody. I haven't, nobody showed, you know, still nobody showed up, Mr. Mayor. And I, I see this as unacceptable to leave my district to go and resurface in somebody else's district. I've been on this council for going on 25 years. I haven't ever known the contractor to come to District 1 and leave, quit resurfacing, and then come back months later to finish. I haven't ever seen that since I've been on this council. The people are demanding it. At least, I think the people need a date certain. Because if you haven't seen today's, you're going to have a letter from me. I want to know a date certain so I can tell the people according to a demand in the administration. This is when you can expect to have those street resurfaced. I've, I've also raised the issue to me for, for, for contractors to go, come into a district and pull up and leave and, and go, go past all the other streets that he was supposed to resurface to get to somebody else's district is, is more than I can accept. So I would like to hear from you as soon as possible regarding a date certain that the contractor would come back, finish up in District 1, stop at Barrish Lane where they left.
Soon as I, soon as I know that answer, I'll get back to you.
All right.
Mr. President?
Ms. Gregory?
Fred, you're not the only one who has had contractors in the, in the district and they, and they left. I've been dealing with the same thing. They did most of all of my streets, and because of concrete work that was ongoing, it, it stopped the rest of the resurfacing. So they were finishing up with all of the concrete work. And of course, I've got people emailing me once a week, every couple of weeks, wanting to know when their street's going to be resurfaced. And I'm not the only one. I know it's happening citywide. And I stay on email with Nick Amberger, and he gives me the latest. So I, I think we are all in the same boat, waiting for these resurfacing folks to come back once all the concrete work is done. I don't know where they'll start, when they get back out there. They may start with you, they may come west. I, I just don't know, Fred, but we're all waiting for them to finish up.
Mr. President?
Mr. Richardson?
Gina, when, when, when did they, when did they come and leave your district?
I don't remember the date. It, it's been a while. They did some streets and then, you know, moved on because we were doing concrete work.
Gina, November is when they came to District 1. It was, it was in November when they came. It was, it was in November when they came, and they left. They spent a couple of days there, and they did some streets. You always, if you have curbing gutters, you always got to do cement work. That goes along with it. You do that before you start resurfacing. You don't come in, start and pull up and go. I'm saying, there's somewhere out there, somewhere. The cement work is, is done in District 1, so there's no reason for them not to come back to District 1.
Mr. President, Mr. President, we can sit here all day long and talk about projects that aren't going as we would like in our various districts, but let's move on to the city's business.
Mr. Richardson, you've made a request of Mayor Stimson. Mayor Stimson has agreed to supply the information, and is there any other commentary?
Yes, Mr. President, I don't think there's no business on this general oil party and citizens that we represent. I'm speaking up for the citizens that we represent, and there is no city business that is not pertaining to these great citizens of this city.
Mayor City Clerk.
Adoption of the, adoption of the agenda.
Mr. President, I move adoption of the agenda and that all items listed as COVID-19 items be declared as such.
Second, been properly moved and second, any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Appeals, we have requests for a wave of the noise ordinance on March 27th at the Brad Mitchell Mansion every Sunday in March and April from 2:30 to 6:00 PM in Public Safety Park, and March 20th from 3:00 PM until 10:00 PM on Brookley Avenue.
So moved.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second, any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Public hearing today is a public hearing to declare the structures at 1205 Belcor Drive East and 724 Kentucky Street, public nuisance and ordering them demolished.
Is there anyone here or anyone connected that would like to offer any commentary during this particular public hearing? If not, the public hearing is closed.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council. We have Shonda Smith from the Parks Department.
Good morning, Ms. Shonda Smith.
Good morning, how's everyone doing?
All right.
I would like to, for the month of March, is Mr. James Richardson.
Your volume is low.
If you could, if you could speak up just a little bit, Ms. Smith.
We have, do we have video of Ms. Smith?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, everybody just needs to be quiet, mute while she's speaking, and then her picture will show it.
Is that better?
It's better.
Yeah. Okay, we have a, our mic is not being friendly today, but I would like to honor Mr. James Richardson, who is our employee of the month for March. Mr. Richardson has been here since 1974, and when we were actually going through these awards, Mr. Richardson actually represents what we say employee of the month is. An employee of the month is go, they go out and beyond, over and beyond what's requested. And Mr. Richardson, he tutors, he teaches lessons, and that is not what we brought on Mr. Richardson to do, but he saw the need and he provided it, and we are very appreciative of him. I laugh because as we're sitting here, CJ, he's taught CJ, he's taught Anitra and her daughter, and so he's calling, he's seeing different people pop up and talking about all the people he's taught. He's made a very big impact in the community, and we are glad that he is part of our team. And I wanted to present this award to him for employee of the month for March.
Wow, outstanding.
Scott, do you want to share anything about Mr. Richardson?
Yeah, this is Scott Novak. I'd like to second the, the words that Shonda Smith said about James. He's been at the city for 49 years, and at Lyons Park Tennis Center really created more than just a tennis center. You go there in the afternoons, there's kids from all over the city coming to him for tutoring and math. It's just a, it's just a great thing for the community, and I could not express words any better, and higher for James than what he's done for, for the city and for the tennis centers in Mobile.
Mr. Richardson, we certainly would love to hear anything that you would like to say.
No doubt about it.
Thank you. I am awfully just, just can't believe that I could have been chosen for this, but the reason I was chosen is because of the people who are around us. We're getting good leadership in every facet of the, our, our community, and it makes it so much easier. If you do what you are just supposed to do there, things will work out, because there are always individuals who are willing to help you out. So again, thank you for the on.
Mr. Vice President.
I'd like to say congratulations to Mr. Richardson. Mr. Richardson did teach me in the eighth grade at Booker T. Washington, pre-agrible. He was one of my favorite teachers, and he always used to make me laugh. One thing about Mr. Richardson, he was always down-to-earth teacher. He made business, but he always was down-to-earth. He was always down-to-earth that he taught us that as, you know, as adults, we can watch cartoons. And I know that's one of Mr. Richardson, you know, pastime besides playing tennis. He liked to watch cartoons and everything, but he has been a very inspiration, you know, to the students at Booker T. Washington when I was attending there at the particular time, and even throughout the community, and his wife, Mrs. Patricia Harsell Richardson. She's very known for making Mardi Gras trains, and the Richardson family have really had invested well within the city of Mobile, and even Mr. Richardson's sister is very active in your district, Mr. President. I can't think of her last name. She's Dr.
Dr. Alberta Richardson.
Yes, 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 but very active. But again, congratulations to Mr. Richardson. I know 1974 is a long time. That was even before Manzi, President Manzi and myself were even thought about.
That's right.
Congratulations to you, and we appreciate your hard work in the city of Mobile and your family's hard work in the city of Mobile.
President.
Mr. Richardson.
I too would like to congratulate Mr. Richardson. I've known Mr. Richardson for a long time. I knew his father. He married a young lady from the Stone Street Baptist Church, Patricia Harsell, and I would just like to say, I didn't know you, but down, down the city for 49 years. Man, let me congratulate you. Your time has come, and it didn't come too early, but your time has come. Congratulations for doing outstanding job for the city of Mobile for 49 years.
Ms. Gregory.
Mr. Richardson, good to see you. The first time I met Mr. Richardson was at the Copeland Cox Tennis Center where he used to work, when I was attempting to play tennis out there, and he was always such a, and I said attempting, Scott Novak will laugh at that one, but he was always so gracious and so good with everybody who, who came out. So this is well-deserved, Mr. Richardson. So good to see you, and the last I checked, you were living in District 7. Hope you are still there.
Well, I, I agree with everything said by our colleagues. Mr. Richardson is a great Mobilean, a great man in general, and I know of just hundreds of students he have impacted their lives and their educational trajectory by instilling in them. Learn through playing tennis, but also the importance of academics, particularly mathematics. And, and that Lyons Park has grown to be his second home, and as we make further improvements, I think we've got about half a million dollars worth of improvement slated for this fiscal year at Lyons Park. We're going to be giving some serious thought as to how we can seriously celebrate and commemorate the work that he's done there at Lyons Park, so that generations from here on out will know that he's been there and know that he's impacted thousands of lives. So keep up the good work, Mr. Richardson. We are incredibly proud of you.
If I could comment?
Absolutely, Mr. Mr.
Thank you. I will echo my sentiments of the, of my colleagues about your role model participation in our city. It's fabulous, and congratulations. And if we were meeting in person and we were down at, at the auditorium, we would all be giving you a great standing ovation. Well-deserved congratulations, and just thanking you so very much. I've learned a lot about your participation, your family's participation, and the honor is extremely well-deserved. Congratulations.
Thank you again, Mr. Richardson. Thank you, Ms. Smith and Mr. Novak, for your continued leadership, and keep up the good work, Mr. Richardson.
Thank you.
Okay, we have Reggie Hill regarding 08139, 31148, 6161, 09168, 31177, and 178.
Thank you so much, Madam City Clerk, Mr. President, members of the councils, Mayor Stimson, citizens, and stakeholders of Mobile. Good morning, Reggie Hill, 1007 Simister Street. Before I begin, I would like to join with the administration of the council and congratulate Mr. Richardson on his service to our city. As discussed by the city clerk, I intend to address the following items, but I'm actually going to ask a question directly for only one of them, for time's sake. For the other items, I have submitted the questions to the city clerk's offices, and as has been consistent in the past, I'm sure that you will share that with the council and proper members of the administration. So in regards to 31148, my bachelor's is in music, so anytime I see such investments, $2 million in arts, I'm pleased. I would just like to know more of the specifics. With regards to 61161, this has been sent to committee. I anticipate having the findings from municipal court in those questions that were asked, 09168. I was pleased to learn that this will lay over. I hope to hear from President Sykes and what he has to offer. This is in my district, District 2, so this is very dear to me, and I agree with the Honorable Councilman from District 1. We should be investing more into this, so I hope to see this conversation I extend, and we get that thing done. As regards to 31, that's 177 and 31178, I look forward to response from administration, particularly the Neighborhood Development Department, and I think there was some influence from comments last week. I would like to see what these findings are. So the main thing that I want to discuss today, again, for time's sake, I'm just being brief, 08139, a few months ago, I requested an inventory list, and then after not receiving that, I came back a couple of weeks later and appealed for that again. And then my current council representative and council president, also on the record, stated that he would request that same inventory list regarding to these items such as we see at 08139. And so I'm just wanting to check on if that has been provided by the administration. If my council member hasn't received it, and if so, when might that be disseminated to me as it had been stated on the record a couple of months ago?
It, it has not been provided.
From the administration?
No, sir.
Okay, would you mind asking the administration when they will be able to offer that, seeing that was a question a few months ago, Mr. President?
It'll be on the top of my list.
I really appreciate that. I look forward to, to hearing from you soon, and thank you all for your support. Have a great week.
Okay, essential COVID items held over. 4101, declare the structure at 709.
Down, down, down. Yeah, I thought it was.
One moment. 4101, declare the structure at 709 Mandrell Street. A public nuisance and order it secured and demolished. 38015, ordinance to amend section. 38-24, the city code to permit the transfer of unclaimed property held by municipal court to the general fund. 60016, ordinance to rezoned property located at 5001 and 5009 Cotage Hill Road from R1 and B2 to B2. 01136, authorized agreement with Alabama Pipe and Supply Company for the EPA Gulf Coast, Mexico Trash Free Waters Grant Project. 03137, concur in the reappointment of Larry Jackson to the Alter Point Health Board of Directors. 03138, appoint Fred, the Honorable Freddie Stokes to the position of adjunct judge, Mobile Municipal Court. 08139, approve purchase order to Donahue Chevrolet for Chevrolet Tahoe police SUVs. 08140, approve purchase order to Dennis Aluminum Products for decorative signposts. 21141, authorized performance contract with GCB Entertainment for the Gulf Coast Challenge. 21142, authorized contract with Rico Signs for Trinity Gardens Park Dodge Community Center marquee sign replacement. 21143, authorized contract with Agmin Russell Electric for an access control system upgrade at the Mobile Alabama Cruise Terminal CBP Offices. 21144, authorized contract with Johnson Controls for ionization tube replacement at Gulf Quest Maritime Museum. 21145, authorized contract with, are we holding that over?
No.
The, um, contract for application of thermoplastic striping marketing legends on various city roadways. I think we're holding on one, are we holding over 146?
Yes.
Okay. 21147, authorized contract amendment with Barter and Associates for Lad State Instructional Repairs Phase 2. 31148, authorize a 2021 Arts Culture and Community Assets Grant, grant application to the Daniel Foundation of Alabama for mechanical upgrades to the Sanger Theater. 21155, authorized contract with Jason Eversole for medical director services for Mobile Fire Rescue Department. 6157, approve settlement agreement and release of claims.
So moved.
Second. It's been properly moved and second, any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Mr. Vice President.
Yeah, I'd like to talk about Resolution 03-138, and Mr. Freddie Stokes. And Mr. President, if you wasn't aware, that the Kappa Alpha Psi motto is achievement in every field of human. And Mr. Honorable Stokes have really have achieved in many endeavors. Mr. Stokes have a history that he's a role model for many youth. It's no secret that Mr. Stokes had grew up in the housing community, the Happy Heel community, and, you know, his story can just be a witness for any young person, no matter where you come from, you can achieve and be anybody that you want to be. And to come all the way from Happy Heels to all the way to the courthouse to be a judge is a great achievement, and I believe that this resolution is going to pass on today, and if so, I'd like to say, you know, be the first to say congratulations to the Honorable Freddie Stokes, my fraternity brother. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. John Williams.
Well, I don't think that CJ could have articulated that any better. What, what a story, and what a pleasure it is to have the Honorable Stokes serve in our community, and I, I think that we all share that, and I am ready to vote.
Absolutely, absolutely, and we say congratulations to the Honorable Freddie Stokes, and we congratulate all the members of his, his historic fraternity, only second to one other fraternity known to man, but we won't get into that discussion today.
Everybody.
That's right, and, and I'm entitled to my facts. And Mr. Stokes, congratulations, we're proud of you to know that he is a son of District 2, and to see how far he's ascended, and this isn't the be, this is just the beginning of what could possibly be an even greater transformative career. So congratulations. of what could possibly be an even greater transformative career. So congratulations to him. And we will be appointing a committee uh toward the end of this meeting that will work to fill those other positions. Uh but there's no need to even put him through that process because he's already been working in many respects without compensation. And so we say congratulations and thank you to him for his hard work.
One other comment?
Ms. Rich.
If I may, on the sponsorship, do we want to list all council members?
Absolutely.
We we talked about that, so just to remind the clerk for the record. Thank you.
Absolutely, absolutely.
But but Mr. Mr. President.
Uh Mr. Richardson.
Our laws um my Wi-Fi went out, so I had to come back home. So uh did um I want to ask Madam Craig, did she read, did you read twenty one one four six?
No.
Okay, okay, all right, thank you.
Any any further uh discussion on the items that been called off by the city clerk? Uh proper motion and second discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Those items passed.
Twenty one one two five authorized management agreement with Mobile Botanical Gardens.
Move to lay over one week.
Second. We probably moved to second in the discussion.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. This is an um management agreement that the city and the Mobile Botanical Gardens have been working on, and uh I'm hopeful that within this week, uh both sides will come to an agreement and we can vote on it next week. I'm told that they are very close, so that's good news.
That's that's great to hear, Ms. Wayne. Great to hear. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed?
Twenty one one four six authorized contract of Harris Contractor for Spanish Plaza lighting upgrades.
Move to lay over one week.
Probably motion and second, move to label one week. Uh any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Posed?
Sixty one six one establish the compensation of adjunct and acting municipal court judges.
Just lay over two weeks.
Second.
Probably moved to second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Item was laid over two weeks.
Essential COVID nineteen items being introduced for the first time, sixty five zero one eight through sixty one eight three.
Mr. President.
Mr. Davis.
Uh I move immediate consideration of items zero three one sixty two, zero three one sixty three, twenty one one seventy two, forty one seventy nine, one eighty, one eighty one, and zero three one eighty two. The remainder delay over one week pursuant to council rules.
Second. Up to move to second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed?
Zero three one six two, one six three are concurring in the appointment of Mary Stuart Nelson to the Alterpoint Health Board of Directors and appointing Bridget Golf Archer to the Human Relations Commission. Twenty one one seven two authorize a performance contract with the Navy League and reallocate monies from District Four and Five capital discretionary money. Forty one seven nine and one eighty are declaring the structures at twelve oh five Bell Core Drive East and seven twenty four Kentucky Street. Public nuisances and ordering them demolished. Sixty one eight one approval of water special bonus to the Parks and Recreation for the month month for March. James Richardson, zero three one eight two, reappoint Gary Witherspoon to the Public Park and Recreation Board for the City of Mobile Lad People's Safety.
Second.
Probably move to second in the discussion. If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed?
Announcement.
Ms. Rich.
Well, thank you very much. I just want to remind everybody that the um time to spring forward with your clock is this Saturday, um so um be sure to pay attention to that. And also, um I look forward to getting the information from the administration about how projects are designated and how they move through the equation. Um so again, I'll reiterate and um hope to get that information so that we're all on on the same page. I appreciate uh Councilman Small mentioning about a CIP um meeting uh with that committee, and I'll be in attendance when that happens, so looking forward to that as well. And also to remind everyone again, the mayor did mention it, but the Festival of Flowers, which is such a fabulous event, it was canceled last year. But this year will be taking place in Cathedral Square, and I hope everyone takes advantage of being part of that exciting event. Um it's a a lot of energy and a lot of effort, and it's hopefully the weather will be nice and they'll get a great turnout. So again, looking forward to that, and um that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Vice President.
Uh thank you, Mr. President, and um with Mrs. Rich, some of the comments that she has stated earlier. But I just want to remind the uh citizens that uh yeah, spring is is on the way, and we will see evidence, you know, every day uh spring is coming, and also April, and we know that April showers bring May flowers and also along with weeds. And that's one of the biggest complaints that I do get from the district. It's about high grass and weed, so we know we are portioning the spring of the year and everything's getting blossomed, including grass and weeds. So re- reminding all citizens, if you have any issues with any type of weed and uh grass that's at blighted properties in your particular community and neighborhood, or even this door across the street, please dial three one ones. If you cannot dial three one one from your uh cell phone, please dial area code two five one, two zero eight five three one one. Again, that start the process of, you know, getting the uh particular property reported to the city. Uh you can feel free to call me or in a, um but the thing about it is that the council people also had to go through three one one also. But again, to even just cut down some time, because it's a process that you have to uh take when you are, when the cities are portioning these properties. They have to dot all their i's across all their t's. But again, report it to three one one, and if you can't dial three one one from your cell phone, just dial two zero eight five three one one as the area code is two five one. Also, citizens of District Three, please mark your calendars for uh March the twenty eighth. It's gonna be a busy day in District Three, uh all across District Three, uh starting at uh eight o'clock that morning, eight fifteen that morning. You know, the uh Revitalized DIP, they will be hosting a uh community cleanup. Um they're asking all the volunteers to show up at the B C Rain High School at eight fifteen A M. And then they will be distributing out equipment and supplies uh for the cleanup, which will begin at nine o'clock A M. and will end at noon. Again, asking for all the nearby residents to please come out on March the twenty eighth, which is a Saturday. Uh to show up and sign up for registration at eight fifteen, and the cleanup will go from nine A M. and on to noon. Also, on the other side of the district, on the same day, um my office on District Three, along with the uh Parks and Recs, uh will have a pretty much a Easter egg hunt at the Bon Howard Randall Park, also known as Duval Street Park on the uh twenty eighth of March, which will begin at ten o'clock A M. until one o'clock P M. Uh there we will have our uh prizes, uh eggs, and also some games and some uh refreshments. Again, that would be on the twenty eighth of March, which is a Saturday from ten A M. until one P M. Inviting all the uh kids in District Three to come out to this great celebration. We wasn't able to have it on last year because of the pandemic. Uh blessings from God that we are able to have a safe one um this year uh at the Duval Street Bon Howard Randall Park. And again, that's from ten A M. to one o'clock P M. inviting all the kids from District Three to come out to this celebration, looking to see you there. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Ms. Gregor?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a reminder that we have the Administrative Services Committee meeting at one o'clock this afternoon. We'll be taking up Chapter sixty five, which deals with the tree ordinance. If you um have not signed in, um contact Lisa Lambert, our um uh city clerk, and she can help coordinate and watch the live stream. Also, just wanted to update everybody about Ziegler Boulevard widening. We had um a drainage repair issue recently that caused a portion of the road to close. It only took the contractors uh doing the work a week to get it completed, so now the road is back open. So work is continuing, more clearing um is uh in process, and then we will also have some more drainage work coming up. But um I am doing my best to get information out to everybody who lives in the neighborhood off of Ziegler in those areas to let them know about all of the upcoming work and if and when there will be any sort of close downs of the road. So um just if you have any questions, feel free to reach out to me, and I will uh get back to you as soon as possible on the latest information on Ziegler Boulevard. But great, great work by the crew handling that drainage repair because it was a a huge project, something that they did not anticipate. And it required closing a portion of the road, uh detouring traffic off of Ziegler onto the service road. But everything turned out um very well and uh no, no complaints, so so thank you for that. And um just one other thing, uh I did want to mention uh again, the uh vaccine event that we had at Friendship Missionary Baptist Church. Uh thank you to the leadership of the church for agreeing to allow the city and USA Medical to come on your site to uh do these vaccines. Thank you for all of your volunteers who were there to help direct traffic and even uh and to some degree, help deliver the shots, because uh some of the members of the church were uh retired employees of the medical center, so they were all out there to help. And it was just a truly great community project, so thank you so much for uh participating. Thank you to the administration uh and everybody on staff for setting this up and for making it such a great event and for bringing all of this into communities um where the help is needed. So thank you again.
Thank you, uh Ms. Gregor, for your continued leadership in that area of our city of in uh and throughout this pandemic, even with food drives and and now with the vaccine drive. That's great. Thank you to the administration. I look forward to going all around the city. Mr. Davis?
I have no announcements, Mr. President.
Wow. Mr. Fred Richardson.
Alrighty, thank you, um Mr. President. I don't want to be competing with anybody. Okay. Okay, all right, let me try this again now. I would like to announce that the splash pad, let me, let me say first of all, the first splash pad to come to City of Mobile came to the Tricentinian Park. And the kids pretty much uh wore that one out. So the city has come in and uh removed that splash pad. And uh they will be installing a new splash splash pad that should be ready by the end of May. I've had lots of people to call me to ask me what happened to this splash pad. They do not want to see the splash pad disappear. It's not going anywhere. We're gonna come back bigger and better, so we're gonna get a new splash pad. And I've been informed that it ought to be ready to go by the end of May. Otherwise, when summer come, when it starts getting hot, the splash pad will be ready. A plan on holding a public safety committee meeting uh Tuesday, March twenty third. On the all year end reports ought to be in, uh we ought to be able to get a year end report on crime across the city. Uh we just need to find out where we are this year versus last year. Are we doing better? It's time for us to hear uh from the police department on where we are uh with crime. So uh I'm going to uh send an announcement out today that uh we're gonna, we're planning on having a public safety committee meeting uh the twenty third of uh March. We are celebrating International Women's Month. I would like to give full honor and credit to Eve, Adam's wife. Genesis three twenty says, and Adam called his wife's name Eve because she is the mother of all living. Every human on the face of the earth, Eve is your mother. I don't care how you look, where you're from, Eve is the mother of all living according to the Bible, and I would like to honor Sister Eve today on this International Women's Month. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Any further announcements? Uh earlier, we had a request from Mr. Williams uh that the items we discussed relative to the uh D B uh so uh socially and economically disadvantaged businesses, that those items and the city's progress are kind of an overview of where we are, how far we've come, would be assigned to a committee. And we're gonna ask Mr. Davis, I believe he's he's not connected, but we're gonna ask him as a finance committee to take that task up uh and get back with us on a date and time uh for that particular meeting so that we can get an overview of where we are as relates to uh that goal uh and how do we move forward and and what progress has been made. We know progress has been made, but we want to be able to quantify it so that we can uh articulate it and make certain that the community is aware of the steady progress that we're making. Uh as relates to municipal judges, I'd ask that we would create an ad hoc committee on the municipal court uh that would consist of myself, uh Vice President Small, and Councilwoman Gina Gregory. Uh I'll get with the two members of that committee so that we can chart a date and a time and a process and hopefully uh make sure that it's public and widely uh known, so any and all persons interested can have an opportunity uh to let that interest be known, and then we move down the road, you know, for the securing enough adjunct judges where uh temporary or assigned judges are hell of their style, uh won't be in uh won't be necessary moving forward. That concludes my announcements. Any further announcements for members of the council?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Regarding your assignment, uh pertaining to D B Es, I would like in in doing that, I would like for them to total, to give us the total value of all contracts in the past year, the total value, and what percentage of that went to D B Es and money? How much money we have spent on contracts, and what percentage of that money went to D B Es?
Look, Mr. Richardson, I hope they'd be able to expand it out further than that. We we ought to have a four-year battery of work. A whole term's worth of work, and I'd like to see that from starting in twenty seventeen uh until where we are now, so that we kind of see what progress we'll make, what progress we truly make. I think that's a great request, and and Madam City Clerk, if we can make certain to communicate that request to uh uh Ms. Ashne Keat and the administration, that would be helpful. Any any further discussion? Let me uh make a clarification, because it's been clarified to me, the uh no, let me stop where I'm ahead. Any any further discussion? Let me just stop right where I'm at. Great.
To adjourn, please.
There's one motion to adjourn. Is there a second? We probably moved to second. Any discussion?
No.
If not, all in favor, say aye.